I'm not a politician, but I'm a concerned citizen that Piedmont needs to change. And, by the way, my... My wife is in the audience. Everybody knows Ms. Peggy. There she is, right back there. My wife, Barbara. I'm just, like I said, I'm a concerned citizen and Piedmont needs to change. We've got to get better. We've got to grow. We need businesses. We need industry. We need people. I would like to see people in London, England go, "Hey, I want to go see what Piedmont looks like." It's like people in Piedmont like to go see what London, England looks like. I ask for y'all's vote, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Next, we'll have Ms. Kaiser.
Thank you, sir. My name is Terry Kaiser. I'm a retired police officer, since about 25 years. I would like to see Piedmont grow, but every small town looking for business. But we got to put our town somewhere on the internet, let them come here. But every small town is looking for business. We got to show Piedmont the way to best. I was born and raised here. I'm a retired police officer. I went back in 2010 into a currenty and had to leave after. See, remember City Office? I'm a 20-year baseball coach, about 10-year referee as a small kid. And I'd like to see our town grow, and I want to do the best I can. And thank you for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Next will be Mr. Lawrence.
I'm John Lawrence. I'm a most famous preacher. It's been an honor and pleasure for me to serve on the city council. I've been dedicated and inexperienced. I want to thank my family for being here today. It's time to move. It's time to change Piedmont. And the only way to do that is have unity in the council. So we need to elect people and to unify Piedmont. They're still separate. Thank you for coming out today. As you all know, I've been on the council for several terms. And I've never shown them the doings. I never will show them the doings. I'm dedicated. I enjoy serving the public. I'm a retired police officer. And it's my honor to serve in the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Next, we'll have Mr. Ella Kelly.
My name is Kenneth. Kenny Kelly, and a better known as Kenny, probably all my life. I'm in Tannenbou, Piedmont. Born and raised here. And seeking reelection, I'm Ed Cumber. And I'm just hoping to see Piedmont better in the next four years by getting reelected and hoping to see some... Hopefully, we can work on trying to get new industry here in town. And we have worked on adding for the last few months. We've been meeting with different ones, showing people what we have, what we have to offer. But I'm just hoping that we can just get some new industry, get some jobs here in Piedmont. Have a fantastic school, great education here that people can get. But I just appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Next, we'll have Ms. Brown.
Hi, I'm Crystal Brown. I'm running for the District Four Council. Never run in politics before. My first run at it. Don't know if I'm going to enjoy it or not. But I'm from Piedmont since '75. We moved here in '75. Been married to Bush for 31 years. Everybody knows him. I have two children who both graduated from Piedmont. Actually, I have a grandchild that's in the Star School here in Piedmont. I'm running because I'm very concerned about Piedmont, the way it's going. We're spending a lot of money and not a whole lot to support it yet. And this is money our grandchildren are going to be paying for the rest of our lives, their lives. And we really need to think about what we're doing and if it's going to benefit everybody in the city, not just the few. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Spears.
Hello. When the Piedmont Journal contacted me, there were two questions that I would be asked. One, why are you running for office? And two, if elected, what do you hope to accomplish? In last week's Piedmont Journal, the second question was answered in its entirety. But the first question was not, "Why am I running for this office?" And that was the one that was most special to me. So I want to share with you tonight, "Why am I running for this office?" This is what I see, and I'm going to read it. My name is Brenda Prater Spears. I'm running for District Five, Council seat, because I love Piedmont. That was it. Short, simple, honest, and from my heart. I will work hard to help Piedmont grow and be progressive and work with the council. But you've got to vote for me. You've got to help me get elected.
Next, we'll have Ms. Maggie.
Afternoon. I'm Cecil E. Hanson, known as Ed Hanson here in Piedmont. I've been waiting for reelection in District Three. I've lived in Piedmont all of my life, other than the four years I was in the Air Force. I'm retired from the Postal Service and retired from the Alabama National Guard. I have... I was raised in Piedmont. I know all about the cotton mill, because I'm a cotton mill kid. But I appreciate the work we've done on our school the last four years. Now it's time for us to do something about industry in this town. Give these people some work to do. My wife's named Marcia. I've got five grandchildren in the school system here. I've got five children, two in Jacksonville, three in Piedmont. Son is the elementary school principal, pre-graduate Ed Ford Hanson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Ms. Anderson.
Hi, my name's Jamie Anderson, and I'm running for District Seven for City Council. I'm married to Bee Gees Anderson, and in 2009, we moved back to Piedmont. And I've grown to love this city, and that is why I'm running. This is where I find a way to raise my children, and I want her to be proud of where she comes from. I believe that the city needs to be more proactive with local, state leaders to attract industry to this town. And I would appreciate your vote on August 28. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Ms. Dixon.
Hi, my name's Doug Dixon. I'm running for District Three. My wife's name's Paula. She couldn't be here tonight. We're having kindergarten already. At the same time, so I was had to be there. So I'm running for District Three, and the reason I'm running is I would like to see Piedmont grow and a place for our kids to get these great educations, not to take somewhere else. A place that we want to stay in Piedmont, a place that people want... I know we're going to get into the industry, and I want to see industry, and I want to see other things. I got ideas and stuff like that. But first thing, I think, one of the candidates, the mayor, asked me, "What would be the first thing I would change? If I could change anything," and that would be the attitude of Piedmont. When you talk to people outside this town, they see Piedmont as a roughneck, bad town. And it's not. And every time they say, "Why do we have this?" People say, "Well, Piedmont has nothing." And we got to change that attitude. Why Piedmont? Why not Piedmont? Let people know what kind of great town this is and how many great people and things we have to offer.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Ms. Stewart.
I'm Diana Stewart, and I'm running for District Five. And I'm going to talk really fast, because I have script, because I want to get in my vision for Piedmont, to focus on what it can be and not what it is today. Revenue coming in from several new businesses, plants, eating establishments, recreational activities. A cleaner, more attractive Piedmont, a positive attitude from the community and the council. Keep chomping at our debt that we inherited until it's not a big issue. A four lane from Jacksonville to Piedmont, to have the flow of business from Anniston to Piedmont. Activities for our young people, so that they will not go to drugs just to have something to do or to cope with having nothing to do. To find a use for the bingo hall that will be something that Piedmont can be proud of. And now continue me, that I'm a retired school teacher for 31 years. I have two daughters that are teachers in Piedmont. I have three. Used to have four grandchildren. That's 10. And I care very much about what goes on in Piedmont. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Mr. Keller.
Good afternoon, people. My name is Ben Keller, Benjamin Keller Jr., but better known as Ben Keller. Everyone knows me as Ben Keller. And I would like... I have my wife and my daughter and my sister-in-law here. I would like for y'all to stand for just a second. Please represent y'all. Thank you. Thank you. Good feeling. And my mom, my mother. This is another blessed day that the Lord had made for us here. So what I want to say is that I am here to do my job and try to get more jobs in Piedmont. And the school look good. But I want to give more education to the kids and get the kids something to do where they can stay out of the street. And I retired from the National Guard 30 years, and I'm proud of it. I'm already doing my retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. What are your plans for recruiting more industry and jobs back into Piedmont? This came from the internet. Mr. McDonald, lead us off.
Well, we need to go out and knock on doors. As in, not residential doors, but industrial doors and business doors. Like I said, it come off the internet. Why can't we go on the internet and locate some of these places? They say, "I'm not a politician, but I have a common sense to know that I can ask. I can ask these people." Wivvies, Sonic, places like Honda has parts that they use. Why can't we house them here? What can they say? Tell us. No? You won't know it till you ask. So we're going to ask. That's my plan.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Kaiser.
As I said before, we're a small town, and we have to advertise. Advertising by free, by being on the internet. Ask these businesses to take pictures and let's put it on the internet and show people how Piedmont is. We have one of the great schools around. One of the best football stadiums I've ever seen. And I've been to many of them, and we have one of the best in the whole state. Just recently, in Piedmont, we got one of the best, a blue ribbon, a blue ribbon school. And that's great. And we have the business coming in. We can have jobs coming in. We have jobs coming in. We have money here. So let's try to work together, get it on the internet. I'll be building the house, and let's make Piedmont, and let's sell Piedmont. It's a great town. Born and raised here, work here, and it's wonderful. And we need to do that by letting people know that we are here. And I know every small town has got this. But we need to show Piedmont better than these other places, and let's show them that. What a great school. Mr. Aiken did a great job. Wonderful. Mrs. Smith did a great job with the football stadium. It's wonderful. The old bingo hall, like one said, let's put it on the internet and tell people. Let's hear it. Let's do something with it. And bring business. We have businesses coming in. Then we can have manufacturers coming in, and let's do that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. We'd like to remind the candidates to please speak up when you're at the podium, and that would greatly enhance people in the vast ability to hear. Mr. Lawrence.
Piedmont is a good city. We have to promote it. On one term of the council, we produced videos advertising how good Piedmont is. Piedmont has a great incentive package for companies coming in. The problem is location. So we have to let them know what's available in Piedmont. If elected, the next council, the mayor, should do some other video. And Mr. Kaiser said, "Put it on the internet." We tell already that taking one step, we have a great school system. A company is going to locate in an area, and that's the first thing they look at. What type of school system the city has. This school system that we're promoting in USA Today, and even all over the country. So people know what kind of school system we have, and that's a draw. But we have to get out and recruit these people. If it means sending out representatives, if it means hiring somebody to work at that position, we should do it. A lot of people don't agree with hiring a consultant to go out there. They want business. But the benefits in the end would be worth the salary of this person if we bring business and industry to Piedmont. Another thing we have vacant landlords downtown. They don't live here. They don't care about us. So we need to get an availability program going to make them care about us. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Keller.
Well, you know, it's not like it. Here is on the council, we've just been sitting back because in over the last three or four months, we have had different ones come in and talk with us about, you know, how to recruit businesses here. You know, we've got over 100 acres of good commercial land out here behind Foster. We've got prime land. We could put a plant there or whatever. And just the main thing, we need to think about maybe this next administration, maybe get some spec buildings built. Or we've got buildings next to B Yankee over here, 278. It's got a big warehouse over here, and we need to promote these businesses that we already have. This moved out. We need to promote new businesses to come in, those businesses. And we've been doing some of that, but maybe with the newly-elected mayor, working with him and the newly-elected council, that we can do more of this, you know, get industry to come here. And like I said, sell it on the internet. You know, lots of us already have been saying, "Put that on the internet." Like George said, we make videos here in the town one time about our town. You know, this is a... We've got this trail here. I think it'd be good if, maybe the next administration, if we build an RV park. I've really been thinking that for four years now. You know, it hasn't happened yet, but I'm going to be working real hard if I get reelected to get one built. Maybe I hear the sports complex to house a lot of these RVs when they come in to have these gee-haw challenges or special events. Like we just had the state tournament here, you know. We have a place for the study out here. If we had an RV park, you know, they could stay there. But we're sort of limited on places to stay. A lot of people, when they come here, they got to stay out of town, you know, and stay in hotels out of town. So I think it'd be good to just work and just promote Piedmont and sell it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Ms. Brown.
One thing before businesses are going to come here is the attitude of Piedmont has to change. We were in Anniston not long ago, and I had a lawyer say, "What's wrong with those people in Piedmont?" That's one thing that's got to change. We've got to get people in here who care about what's going to happen to Piedmont. I don't want my children to move away, but there's nothing here for them to do. There's nothing here for them to work out. We're going to have to go to businesses that you wouldn't dream of, off-the-wall businesses. How many transformer repair shops have you ever seen? There's one in St. Alabama. We have a second one. We had to close when my father died. Don't look at just the main businesses you see. You need to go and start looking at all these smaller businesses, off-the-wall businesses that you wouldn't think about coming to Piedmont. And advertise. Advertise. Go to them and say, "Look, come give it a try. We've got buildings. We've got land. Try it." Set up with some incentive package for you, anything to make them come and look at Piedmont. That's what we have to come look for. We're even going to... They're going to even consider it. That's one of the main things. The attitude has to change. We have to get people to want to come to Piedmont. Just having a school is a good thing, but it's not all of it. People aren't going to come just because the school's good. They're going to have to come because there is a job for them to come to. And that's where we're going to have to get... If we have to hire somebody or send out our councilmen, would you ever get out there and start advertising Piedmont as a good city, not one divided anymore? Somebody who will work together and that wants an industry here. That wants businesses here, large, small, any. Take any of them and help them out, help them start the businesses. And that's one of the main things we're going to have to work on, because without businesses, we're not going to have any revenue coming in.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Spears.
The jobs, we should try to secure funds through a productive grant writer on a contract basis. If the funds are out there, we should be pursuing those funds to create jobs in Piedmont. Jobs in Piedmont will improve when the state and federal economy improves. I will tell you, as I've gone door to door in District Five, the jobs an issue in getting people and new businesses in town. But let's talk about the Donut Print on 278 and the Marten Shop next to it, the Pool Doctor, which is on Westwood Digger Street, and Gifts by Glover on Eastwood Digger Street, and also the newest business to open on Center Avenue, Hair Designs by Deborah. We get the businesses in Piedmont, but has the mayor and council given them a ribbon-cutting ceremony and had it in the paper to thank them for coming to our town? No publicity. That's free publicity. And then have some small amount in the budget set aside for if they want a month or six weeks for their brand opening, provide some light refreshments, and then thank them. But the store I was in today told me that no one on the council and not the mayor has even stepped foot or even peeked in to say, "Hi, thank you for being here and helping us, and we're glad we're here."
Mr. Anderson.
I'd like to say, the last three months, we've had somebody from the Department of Commerce out of Montgomery come up talking to us the same problem. We had Al Cook. He's a recruiter from... He lives in Opalocka. He was telling us about the plant they got in Opalocka, the last one they got. He went overseas to Germany and recruited. We got to get a recruiter out there either on a part-time basis, and if you want to use one of the councilmen, use them. But right here in Jacksonville, Alabama, 16 miles down the road, we got these small businesses. We can get them people to help us write things, help us recruit people. We got the EDC out of Calhoun County. We can use them people. We've got the land this Kenny was talking about up here. We've got empty buildings. And as we were talking to the Department of Commerce, we helped the best water... One of the better water systems in the state of Alabama. They said, "Well, hey, maybe y'all need to go out and recruit some, something to do with food service, you know, to help out." We've got all these empty plants around here. We just need to get out, recruit, bring people here to sell. If we have to give away empty land or empty plant, hey, look what Mercedes and look what Hunts have brought, and they give deal pretty well in the state of Alabama. We get them here, but hey, look at what's coming out every night. That's all we need to do is get out, and we got to get up. I've seen too many people in the last four years that have been on unemployment. Their benefits have run out, and hey, they just... They're at the point now, they don't care. Let's just get out there. It's good to see y'all over here tonight, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Anderson.
The first thing I would suggest doing to bring industry to town would be to open the lines of communication with local and state leaders. When a company looks to locate in a state, they're going to go to Montgomery and talk to state leaders first. We need to work those connections so that when a company does come calling, Piedmont is first on their mind. We've got to rebuild Piedmont's public image so that companies will be attracted, will want to locate here. We've got to promote the city actively. Keep calling. Don't let them shut the door on us. And when we get companies here, we need to keep our money here. You know, spend money in these local businesses that open up, or they're not going to be able to continue to operate. We also need to look at our infrastructure. When companies locate, they're going to ask, "How are we going to transport what we build?" We don't have a railroad system, so we need to look at our roads. I think the goal should be to work with Calhoun County so that Highway Nine is turned into a four lane. It's a direct route to I-20 and can open up a lot of possibilities for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dixon.
As I said, the first thing we've got to do is change the image of Piedmont. Get people who want to live here, want to raise their families here. But as far as businesses, the problem in Piedmont is not the empty buildings. The problem is the reason they're empty. There's a reason they're empty. And we... There's other towns that are smaller than our town, that has less to offer than we do. The problem is we're not showing what we have to offer. Piedmont has plenty to offer. One thing we have to offer that no other town around here can compete with is we own all of our utilities. And yet, we are out... We are running them out of town because of high utilities when we should be telling them, "If you'll bring 1,000 jobs into our city, we're going to give you whatever. We're going to give you your utilities at cost." We're not going to... Like I said, we want to tell you, we thank you for your business, and we hope that you stay here. And another thing I would like to look into is something a little different. Is a lot of people come from Georgia, Center, Piedmont, right through here to Jacksonville to go to school. I would like to reach out to Jacksonville State to see if we could get them to be interested in putting a campus here in Piedmont. And they could work here with one of the highest technology, best schools in the system to train people and to bring people into our town to spend money, make it attractive. The businesses are... We use excuses of our roads not being active enough, long enough, because people are using our roads right now. They're coming through our town every day from the Honda plant in KTH in Leesburg. They're coming right by our empty warehouses every day with their trucks, when they're fixing to build new warehouses because they are adding on. Why are we not finding out what we've got to do to get their interest in Piedmont? Like I said, change the attitude from "Why Piedmont?" to "Why not Piedmont?" We have so much to offer, not just good people, the best school. We have a trail that we need to focus on bringing business in that revolves around that trail. We need to look at businesses that we can give.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Ms. Stewart.
I have to say that I am not guilty. I have been to the Donut Place. If you come on, we can admit it. I've been to have my toenails done and I took the sun. I have haircut today there. I have not visited the barbershop, but maybe that will mean something. Anyway, just like all the other candidates and the jobs, we want to come to Piedmont. We did have the State Department of Commerce to come and talk with us, like somebody else mentioned. And they, we do need to get, quote, like a resume of Piedmont so that when these companies need to locate somewhere and they pull, they say they need the building, a land, something that's close to a four lane. We have all of that on our resume. They pull it. And, but the trouble is going to the Department of Commerce is that there's 16 other cities that have the same resume. So what we have to do is go out and, and go to Birmingham, excuse me, Montgomery, to Washington if we need to. We're going to have to market our city. We're going to have to use that resume. Our resume should include the assets that we have, the buildings we have, the land that we own. Certainly, we have the job force. We have the people that need the jobs. And offer incentives like somebody already said, that it may be electrical incentive or lease incentive. But we are going to have to go and market, market our town so that, and go often, like Ms. Emerson said, to keep on going. And since I'm retired, I'm available to go with any of the other councilpeople as often as we need to. I know how to get to Anniston. I know how to get to Montgomery. So I'm ready to listen to the people and see what they say and offer suggestions. And I hope our kids that graduate to be able to stay here. Thank you.
As it all have been said, it's all the same. But many things, these empty buildings, that land around here, ain't bringing no money in the city. They need to put jobs in, just like the bingo hall or better. They can make a little bit more out of here. We need jobs and need more things for our young kids to do, like recreation and stuff. For example, the pool, they don't have nowhere to go now. The place that is swimming, they need a swimming pool. So we need to do things to make Piedmont right and look good. We got to have jobs for anything happen. And we all need to get on one car and do the job that got to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. How do you plan to raise revenue to repay the city's debt? Mr. McDonald, please offer.
That's a hard question because we are in debt. So how do you pay that debt off? You bring businesses in here. You get your revenue up. Like I said, you know, we may have to swing deals with these businesses to get them in here. But once we get them in here, then we've got the revenue. If we can build this revenue, build it up, eventually we might be able to bring our utilities down to where all of us can afford to live here. Like I said, that's a hard question, you know? How do you pay back the debt? I couldn't tell you what it is. Speculation is that it's 11 million, 15 million. I don't know. But if I was a city councilman, I would find out and work on it. That's it. It's a very hard question.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, sir. My choice is that is a hard question. How do you think that gets paid? Let's look at everything what we have. Our opportunity going to be filled. Let's do something with it. We wouldn't involve in it, but if we got it, then let's use it for some reason. Now, let's, let's get together and as a council member, I promise that if we'll work together, all need to work together. All council members have debt for this. And that means what it takes. And let's work towards that goal. Let's make goals from day one and try to do what's good for our town. And we, we got a long way to go, but we can do it. Here, but there, we're going to be. Let's work towards that goal. Let the mayor and councilmen all work together and try to figure this out. Don't sit there, councilman, and do nothing. Let's just talk about it. Do something. Speak up. And I assure you, if I get elected, I will do that. I'll be loud and go forward. I'll be honest and I'll be fair. And that's my promise. Chief Tebow's down before working the place for me, and I'll make sure that, you know, we try to spend the least that we can. And I try to have a budget and, you know, they flip at me sometimes. I'll try to do the right thing. And I will do it. I promise. If you get elected, I'll be fair and I'll be honest. Thank you.
Good question, Mr. Lawrence.
Piedmont has a debt. But if you look at this from a government, the school system, and the city, citywide, all the cities in Alabama, large or small, they operate on bond issues. That's how you survive. You have to have bond issues to get the necessary money. For the repayment, you got to have some business in here that produce a lot of revenue. Retail taxes, it helps when they won't deliver. But you go back to business, come in and locate in Piedmont. So we need to work together with the next mayor and council, whoever they are, and concentrate on cuts in the city while not hurting unnecessary items. You look at where we at in Piedmont. And like I say, we got to have bond issues to operate the city. Paying these bond issues, that's the problem. So we have to work with business to cut the turnover. And work together with the mayor and council to look at the debt.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Keller.
You know, when we're talking about debt, we go back in past administrations. We had debt even back in the past administration. We had bond issues even back in those administrations. We paid higher payments back in the administration before us and we're paying now for ours, our bond payments. But you got to look what we've invested in our kids. I got four grandkids that's going to this school system here. And I've invested in those grandkids. And they got something to be proud of. Look at what Piedmont's done in the last few years with this empowered program. There's something that they don't have in others, in other counties that we have here in Piedmont. We have these, the math books that they get to take home and do their homework on. You know, it's kind of to that, that everybody's going out to know how to operate their computer and do computers. And that's one thing we can say that our children is going to be, they're going to lay up on it. And when it comes to technology, you know, that's, I'm proud to say that Piedmont has the best school system around where it comes to giving their kids the modern technology that they need to get. When they get out of school, they can take what they get, their computer skills and whatever. They can use it wherever they go to work or whatever they do. But we can sit and talk about debt all day long. But we do, we do need new industry coming in Piedmont. We need, we need the new restaurants coming in. And hopefully, that's something we're working on right now. Hopefully, we're going to have some new restaurants coming, you know, in the next few months and wings of hope. And hopefully, we got a new business like this coming up here to the old nursing home, you know. It's not like we've been sitting around idle the last four years because I can tell you, we have, we have recruited one business and, you know, and hoping that it's going to start growing and hopefully that they'll start to hire more employees. And that's, that's the best thing we can do. Most of all, is get more, more industry here.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
It's one thing, we are quite a bit in debt and we are going to have to pay it off. The bond issues, I don't know how you can get out of them. Don't know what to do. You have to try to do something to pay them off. Bring industry in, stop spending money. We've already cut bare bones to our employees. The city employees are to the bone. We can't afford to lose anymore. So you can't cut any people out. So you're going to have to look at the spending, what the city's spending on and what they're factoring out for other businesses to do. Can we do it ourselves instead of having other people do it? But until we can start getting together and cutting some of that cost and looking at how to bring the cost down, we're just going to have to pay all this. And it's going to be rough for everybody. And we're going to have to figure out a way to get together to try to bring it down, try to get away from some of it and pay it as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Spears.
Yes, the budget must be transparent and very conservative. The wholesale utility rates will be the key to next year's budget, the utilities. We can only do what our budget allows. We need to be conservative. We need to be frugal. The current mayor and council has incurred a $9.5 million debt. Not every taxpayer in Piedmont supports the athletic program or the school system in Piedmont. Many citizens do not have children in the system or care about sports, period. But they're going to have to also pay for this $9.5 million just as we who support athletics in Piedmont, and my husband and I certainly do. If elected, I will ask questions. I will question policies. And if I ask a question and the answer is, "Why do you want to know that?", then that sends up a red flag. Be proactive, not reactive. Know what's going on. Question the policies. Go back and make everything transparent, the budget. Let us know what is being spent, where it's being spent, and how we can get ahead. Thank you.
I'd like to say, our city this last year, the sales tax, our revenue with our utilities and stuff like that was more than our sales tax. We need to get businesses into town. I'd like to say, "Hey, I hadn't heard nobody say about it. We've got a dollar general market here. That's a big improvement." And we are talking to people about some of the empty stores here in town. And we just hope, you know, that we can get somebody in. Our utilities, I am on the elected committee with our utilities in Montgomery. I was with them the first of August. This year, there's no utility hike for AMV, our utilities this year. We've had one utility hike in the last four years. And we turned around and helped our business out. I know they're under what's called a demand rate, but we turned around and helped them out. So, I mean, we've got to look, hey, this whole country's been in economic depression here for the last four years. We got election for mayor and council. We got election in September that are going to help us, you know, the state on this year, out of no trust. So we need everybody out on that. Then we've got the big election in November. Just get out and vote. But in the meantime, hey, let's shop in Piedmont first. And that will help us that much more. Thank you.
Ms. Emerson.
If elected, I will treat the city budget like I do my own. If I don't have the money, I don't spend it. And I won't spend your money. If I can't pay money back, I don't borrow it. And I will do that with yours. When I do spend my money, I invest wisely. And that's what we need to focus on. The bond issues are there. We have to look at how we're going to spend it and make sure the rate of return on whatever we spend it on will help us pay that money back. Bond issues aren't the only way, and city revenue isn't the only way the city can get money. There are grants out there, grants to help us accomplish what we need to do in the city. Anniston City receives a community development block grant. They have over $600,000 of free money to help rehabilitate and build houses for low-income families. That's what we need to be doing, is searching out money from the federal government that we don't have to pay back to help us rebuild this city.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Dixon.
Like the first couple said, the debt issue is not an easy question because the debt's here. And it's not going to go away in four years. But what can go away is that it's a spending. And a little bit smarter about what you do. For example, whether you're for or against the pool that they're building, that's a lot of money to spend on something that no one can even tell you how much it's going to cost to maintain per year. That would be something you would think would be known before you even attempt to build it. And also, I think you don't spend money and then figure out how we're going to pay for it. You save the money, you get the money, then you figure out where you're going to spend it. And as far as running up the city, I think the council should do that. But when it comes to something as major as the football program that they're doing and the pool, whether you're for it or against it, I think that it should come down to letting the people decide because the people are the ones that's going to pay for it. And, you know, we, and not only are the people in here paying for it, just a select few are, the ones that are paying utility rates in Piedmont. The ones that are living outside that don't have the utility rates, they're enjoying the same thing without having to pay for it. A select few should not have to pay for it and a select few should not have to go for it. I think it should be up to the city when it's that kind of money to be spent. And I think that, like I said, we should make smarter decisions, know what we're doing before we get into it. These bonds, if I was told right, they can't even be paid off early. You know, so therefore, if we get more money, it's not going to do us any good to try to pay it off early. What we got to do is reduce the spending. And then the debt will go away eventually, but we've got to make smarter decisions before we do it.
Good story.
I think it is sad and bad that we did inherit this big debt. But we did inherit it and we're going to have to get busy in trying to pay this debt off. And one of the things that we're talking about, we've got to have the revenue. And to get this revenue, we have got to, to market our town. And I'm beginning to say to go make these congressmen, these senators, or representatives, wherever we have to go to make them aware of Piedmont when industries are ready to relocate that they would think Piedmont. We got a person at our church that he goes and visits and visits and visits and visits. And people will come and join our church or come to church just to get him to stay away. So that's what we're going to have to do, is make, go so many times that they think Piedmont. And our council is going to have to have a vision in a way. We're going to have to work together. And not just on that once, twice a month. We're going to have to work together to have this vision of how we're going to accomplish and get this revenue. The revenue is the key word. We've got to have revenue to pay our bills. And we can get grants. There are some icons that we miss. Grants means that you do not have to pay it back. Some icons in our city that we need to work on to preserve. And one of them is the Bethune Center and the city, the Old Civic Center and the library. And grants are available for us to use money set aside to preserve these organizations. Another way is recycling. And now that the benevolence center has started recycling programs, so we need to expand on that and push it just a little bit more. I would like to end on something that is, and you know, it's very quick, so I won't end on that. Maybe another opportunity sometime.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Keller.
And they say you can't really answer that person how you're going to pay the debt. But we've But with jobs coming in here, we might have to give them a little lower rate on utility where that they'll stay in here and they'll start leaving out, taking somewhere else. But the main thing, they have got grants out there for all different stuff that's going on in the community. And so you just got to know how to get out there and get the grant. And so, thank you. And if you fuck me in, I'm gonna work hard as I can on everything. Thank you.
In the city of Piedmont, revenue from utilities is the greatest revenue generator. Why, how do you plan to fix it? And would you ever consider turning city power over to Alabama Power?
I'll start with the turning it over to Alabama Power. That has been asked to me before, if I was city council, would I consider it? We shouldn't have to. We shouldn't have to turn it over to Alabama Power. So I'm sure every one of y'all was here during the Ivan hurricane. We were the only city in Calhoun County that, we were out of power for what, 45 minutes at the most, you know? Because we have a good system. So why can't we keep, but why can't we adjust it to where everybody can afford to live here? Can afford their power bills? I've heard horror stories about the power bills. I don't know. We haven't had a problem with paying our power bills, it's just me and my office. And would you please, the first question?
The first part of the question was, revenue from utilities is the greatest revenue generator. Why does that happen and how do you plan to fix that?
I don't see a problem with that. I mean, if it's the greatest right now, that's a good thing. We need that revenue, but there again, like I said a while ago, let's get other revenue in here, let's build that revenue and bring our utilities down. There's a medium in there somewhere, I'm sure. And with seven councilmen and the mayor, I'm sure that we can put our heads together and come up with a medium. Thank you.
Again, sir, that is something I don't know much about, but I feel like that revenue is great for our town and we have to have it. As far as Kevin over at Alabama Power, no, I think we need to keep it here, here in our town. Like I said, the mayor and the new councilman will have to work together and try to keep that at a low rate. I understand that we probably one of the lowest rate in Calhoun County. Like again, I don't know much about that, and I'm willing to learn and see what, see what happens. I don't know, but I think we need to keep it here and do not sell out. Again, that's something new that I like to work at, and that's not, I don't know about that, but I'm willing to learn. But whoever, our mayor and council here, we need to work together and keep our debt here.
Piedmont is a very big city. We're one of the few cities in Alabama that own all of our utilities. So why should we turn it over to Alabama Power? If you check around Cherokee Electric, Alabama Power, and other cities, you find out that Piedmont has one of the lowest rates around. I know it's hard to believe when you get your bills, but check around, and you'll see that it is. Suppose it been the only revenue source? That's just the way it is. It was set up like that long before I got on the council. And if they should get something to take place of that revenue, it's gonna remain there. So I think we need to work on and keep the rates as they are, and continue to run our utilities. Thank you.
Sorry, I know what John said, too. Piedmont has utilities, all of your own utilities, that would really make it better for us to recruit new businesses. That way that we could recruit these businesses by giving them incentives to come, give them a cut on their, on their power rates, maybe to, to get them to locate here. That's one good thing, that it is good, we do own our utilities, that we can do these things for incoming businesses to help recruit. But another thing too is, I've been on the council now for four years, and I can only remember one time that we had to increase the rates, our utility rates. And I still echo what they said, we have probably the lowest utility rates and by no means that we wanna sell and give our utilities away. Because Piedmont, even looking back when I was a young boy, Piedmont still operated their town off of the utilities because people were in business to sell utilities, we own our utilities, we're big water, sewer. We own those things, and we do, and we even own our, we even own our garbage. I mean, we're in business to even sell, you know, recruit new, new garbage customers, whatever, you know, we're, we're in the utility business, and we can keep it low, and the way we can keep it low and make it even lower is to bring industry in this town and bring more people, then we can get more revenue, where we can maybe even cut our utility rates more. That's, that's, that's what you really do to, to give, you know, to get lower utility rates. We gotta have something here that we don't, we can maybe get away from, you know, using our utilities to, for that. But I think that's the way we're gonna do it, is recruit and get more revenue coming in, and then I believe that our utility rates can either stay the same or even fail up. Thank you.
As for selling Piedmont's utilities to Alabama Power, I would not think that's a good idea. It shouldn't be done. Utilities should not be our main source of income in this city. We should, the only way to do that is bring our businesses in and giving them incentives on demand rates is a good thing, but you have to limit it. At some point in time, the demand rates need to go up. Right now, the demand rates for all our businesses have gone lower while the citizens are having to pay a higher rate. And that hurts the people who cannot afford the utilities, while it does help the businesses. Like I said, it's, you gotta raise something and lower something. You got to meet in the middle. It's not fair to the citizens to pay a higher utility rate to help the businesses keep the demand rate down. But we should not sell utilities to Alabama Power. I do not believe that'd be the thing. It is something the city needs, and we are unique in having our own utilities. That's one reason my father had moved his business here. And it does, it does bring in businesses. And then you can bring in more businesses, get more sales tax, and that will cut the utility rates, and we'll be supported by sales tax instead of our utility revenue.
I don't know how to answer this until I see, get more information, because seeing is believing. But when you talk to different people, we get that we are so low. Well, on any given time and any given person, that's what we hear, but you would actually need to see it to believe it. Going out and campaigning, this is two points I want to make. One, a person told me that he's, he has seen the document, and this goes back to the beer steward time, that Piedmont signed a long-term document that we would be locked in and have no say-so about the rates. I did not see that, so I don't know if that's true or not. But that's a big question. If there's a long-term contract, is there three more years left on that 39-year contract? Or is it two years or what? I don't know. And is there any way we can get, get out from under that contract? If we kept told, we have the lowest utilities, we're, we're very good in Piedmont. But also, two people had told me they want to put their house up for sale, and when the county picks up, because we know there's a lot of homes for sale, to move to Vico or Spring Garden to get under Alabama Power. So any given time, when you talk to somebody, you get a different answer, but the truth will be there when you see the documents and you ask enough questions and see for yourself. I cannot answer, I don't know if I would sell or keep it in the city, with the city, until I got more information. And I wish I did, but I would have to get more information, so.
Okay, I've been in this for 16 years. We bought our electricity out of Montgomery through a co-op, we're buying it from Alabama Power. I have got Alabama Power, Cherokee Electric, and the city of Piedmont Electric in District 3. I can carry you to a, carry you out to a TBA person or a Alabama Power and recurring power ratings, and I guarantee you the utilities, our utilities are cheaper. But if you know there's a field in Washington where they are trying to put a tax on all of your coal plants. Okay, we're trying to get away right now from coal plants and go back to hydro, but if you remember when we had the drought, that's when all of your power's electricity went up. But as our, we have got the lowest prices on utilities right now. It's like I said, four years ago, we raised the rates up. Now they can have a raise down there, a lot of times we take it and don't even add it to the field. But the thing about it is, I've got people that lives in my district that cross the street, they're on Algon Power. The other side is our electricity. When the ice storm come through here, hey, our electricity was on a wisp before some of the people out there even got electricity. I don't, hey, I would, I would not go along with settling back to Alabama Power. 16 years ago, I would have been there. But it's one of them issues now. We just signed another contract that runs through 2025. So I got 15 seconds, hey, let's leave it alone.
Utilities are our biggest revenue base because sales tax has not existed. Hopefully, when we bring in industry, the sales tax revenue will increase and we'll be able to depend on utilities less. We can't sell to Alabama Power. The city would go broke, we would lose essential services, and possibly have to file bankruptcy. That is our primary revenue. We all depend on services that the city provides, and it's just not realistic to turn over to Alabama Power. If we had a stronger revenue base, different revenue base, that might be an option, but as it stands now, it just, it isn't a realistic option.
Yes, being our only, our main source of revenue is a problem. Like I said also earlier, we need to be using this as a tool to recruit. But we've got to build that revenue so that it is not our only thing that we have, you know? I know they keep talking about the rates have not went up and the city hasn't ate it, but how long you think they're gonna keep eating it? After a little election, maybe? I've never been told that it was going up. There's no other choice unless something happens. Therefore, we need to start looking at other options, not selling our power, upgrading our power. When, I'm told that our utilities is not capable of taking on a certain type plant if it came into Piedmont because it's not, it needs to be upgraded. We need to, we're turning down businesses. I was told that we turned down the new funeral home and gave it to Alabama Power. I don't think we should turn it over to Alabama Power, but if we're gonna keep doing what we're doing, we're gonna eventually turn it over to them anyway. We're not using it, let's start using it. It is our source of revenue, let's start using it and making more money off of it, and then start recruiting businesses so that it is not our own source of revenue.
Well, this is definitely not my forte. If I need to answer, I probably get pragmatic and strong a little bit. But this, it has, in campaigning around this, this question has come up so many times to me, you know, what we can do to get our utility rates down. Well, I've talked with Michelle in the central office, and I was told that 70% of our revenue comes from our utility bills. So, you know, the answer is, we've got to get new jobs and plants and things in to raise our revenue. We met with AMEA, which would buy our electricity, and they buy from Alabama Power. And I asked that question after our meeting was over, why did we go through the AMEA and not buy directly from Alabama Power? And I was told that they furnish electricity to several towns, so they buy at a bulk rate, a lot cheaper than we could buy from Alabama Power or status. So with that answer, I would say do not go to Alabama Power to keep our city electricity. I'm gonna read this right away, because I wanted to end on positive note. I was fortunate enough today to hear a motivational speaker at Piedmont High School, and I would like to use some of the things that he said to end with, since being is the last one and it goes with his name. Believe in people, you don't always have to agree with them, but believe in that they are good and working for you. Keep the main thing, the main thing, and don't let these little things get in the way of the main, accomplish the main thing. 15 seconds. Always have, can I get a, ask, can I get better? Know that, that we are not there, the key word is yet, meaning that we will be there. Separate the who from the do. When someone suggests something to you to do, don't take it personally, concentrate on what you have to do.
I think that we need to look at different rates and stuff and get together as a city council because really, we really don't know. Really, I can't answer that question, really. But we need to figure out a way to take the utility down no matter what it takes, because if we keep it up high and keep getting it up high, all of the history y'all talking about coming in here, they gonna believe it out just quick if they come in. So we need to take it down some kind of way in order to get more y'all and stuff from here. Thank you.